Yeah, we will. Good afternoon, Chatham. Welcome to the April 15, 2025 meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair. I don't see any such notification, so I'll go ahead. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 28, 2025 signing of Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until June 30, 2027, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, pound sign, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First order of business here is to take, establish a quorum, Mr. Metters.
Present.
Mr. Dykens.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Shell is present, and Mr. Nacastro.
Present.
I will take a motion on the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those, any comments? Well, how about that? Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
So, we are awaiting one of the key people for one of our public announcements, so I'm going to ask if anybody on the board has a public announcement or an agenda request. Of course not. Anybody in the, in the audience here in the room? Yes, sir, Mr. DeBoer. See if you can stretch it out a little bit.
Good evening. I'm Steve DeBoer. I'm here on behalf of the Independence Day Parade Committee. And a couple of weeks ago, I was here to announce the theme for this year's parade, and tonight I'm here to announce the Graham Marshall. We selected that last night. It was very difficult. We got a lot of nominations, and it's good to know that there's so many people in town that are so well thought of to have somebody else nominate them. The problem is, it made our job a little more difficult because we had such a, such a good list. So, after some deliberation, we came up with Betty Hayner as this year's so I think she's actually away on vacation. I tried to reach out to her today. I think I got a text back from her husband. I'm not sure who it came from. So, I think she knows about it, but as soon as she gets back, I'll make her aware. But, that's it. And then, we're going to move on. The next step now is the participants. So, we're going to open up the applications, I believe, on May 15, and that'll be from May 15 to about June 15, we'll be accepting applications to be in the parade.
Okay, sounds great.
Okay, have any questions?
Any questions here?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Have a good evening.
So, we do have one other announcement. If I, I don't know whether it's Jeff or Cory that's going to make it with respect to a renewed request for interest in running for the school committee. Jeff, or?
Yeah, thank, and Cory announced it last week, and we'll just reaffirm the solicitation for anybody that might be interested in being on the Regional School Committee, the Montomay Regional School Committee, very important position. We would solicit names. If a person is super interested, we can generate a write-in campaign, if you will. If there's one, one, one person interested, if more than one, then we get together with the school committee and appoint someone. So, anyway, we are soliciting interest in our Regional School Committee, extremely rewarding experience and really fun time. So, anyway, please, someone, preferably a young parent. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks. I don't know if I offered the opportunity to the online audience to make any announcements or agenda requests? Anybody online? Okay, well, I'm going to proceed slowly. We, as perhaps most people know, Ted Keon, Coastal Resources Director, is going to be retiring. Our senator, whom I'm told is walking in the door, and our representative, Hadley Luddy, are here personally to present him with certificates, and I think I'm going to turn the floor over to Jill to do the retirement announcement and to be the stage director for the rest of this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we're here tonight to recognize Ted Keon. He's our Coastal Resources Director, who is retiring at the end of this week. And I do have a town proclamation to read on behalf of the Select Board, as well as a certificate of appreciation. And then, we do have Senator Sears' legislative citation recognizing Ted's great years of service, as well as Rep. Luddy, who is here tonight. So, Ted, do you want to come up here, please? As I always say, it's very bittersweet for retirements. Ted has done such a phenomenal job with the town, and he's been such a great member of Team Chatham that goes beyond natural resources and coastal resources. So, first, I'm going to give you, I'm going to present a certificate of appreciation, and just know you're not taking any of these home with you tonight. We're going to have them on display on Friday, and then you can take them home and enjoy them with your family. So, this first one is a certificate of appreciation to Theodore Ted Keon for your 27 years of service to the citizens of Chatham. Congratulations on your retirement on April 18, 2025. So, thank you, Ted, and here's your certificate. Yes. One more, and this is a little longer. This is the Town of Chatham Proclamation and Resolution. Whereas, we wish to express special recognition to Chatham Coastal Resources Director Theodore Ted Keon, and to honor him for his distinguished career in public service. And whereas, Mr. Keon served in the Army Corps of Energy Engineers, Philadelphia District, and began his career with the Town of Chatham in January of 1998, most recently serving as our Coastal Resources Director in the Department of Natural Resources. And whereas, Mr. Keon has represented the Town of Chatham on various regional and county committees and boards, including the Pleasant Bay Alliance and the Barnstable County Dredge Advisory Committee, an alternate to the Cape Cod National Assembly Advisory Committee. And whereas, Mr. Keon worked with and support of the Massachusetts Office of Coastal Zone Management on behalf of the town, and with the Massachusetts Rapid Response Coastal Storm Damage Assessment Team. And whereas, the Chatham Select Board and Chatham Town Manager wish to express their appreciation to Ted Keon for his outstanding performance of his duties managing Chatham's coastal resources, waterfront infrastructure, and maintaining one of our most precious resources. And whereas, this proclamation is presented to Ted Keon to serve as a reminder that although he's retiring, he will always be remembered as a valued employee, dedicated to public service, and working specifically to resolve our sand problem. Now, therefore, we, J. Michael Shell, Select Board Chair, and Jill, our Goldsmith Town Manager, and the Select Board, do hereby present to Chatham Resources Director Ted Keon this proclamation on behalf of the Select Board, the Town Manager, and all Chatham citizens, as a testimonial to your, to his faithful, faithful and dedicated service to the community, and with our best wishes for continued success and happiness in the future. Thank you, Ted. Do you, would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
And then we'll invite our legislative delegation up as well.
I'm not sure I solved the sand problem. I don't think anybody can solve the sand problem. It was a real challenge coming here, coming out of the federal government, going into the municipal type of governmental system was a big change. It was actually a lot of fun, because as I indicated to Tim Wood when he was sort of getting my background and on so forth, with the core, you start a project and it takes decades before you see anything. Working in a system like this, you see a problem, you work with folks, you come up with a solution, you go through the regulatory process when needed, and then usually you actually do the project in a matter of months to a year, 90 Bridge Street, maybe more, a few years. But it's satisfying to really see things come to fruition and address problems. So, that's really been a very valuable, you know, experience for me. I don't know how special I am, but I know that Chatham's special. It's got special issues, it's a special community, so it's been really fun to work here. Thank you very much.
Senator Sears and Rep. Luddy, would you like to come up and present the citations?
Great, thank you. Hi, Ted. Nice to see you. Thank you. Okay, so I don't mind going first, but I have a citation signed by the Speaker of the House on behalf of the House of Representatives, thanking you for your 27 years of dedicated service to protecting the marine and shoreline environment of Chatham, and we wish you the very, very best in your retirement. Thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we too have a citation from the State Senate. Do you want to read this? Do you want it official? No, 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 we can just read one. Official citation, being known in the Massachusetts Legislature, we'll do plural, we'll place that on the letter. Massachusetts Legislature extends its congratulations to Theodore Ted Keon in recognition of your more than 25 years of service to the people in the Town of Chatham culminating in your tenure as Coastal Resources Director. And be it further known, the Massachusetts Legislature hereby extends its best wishes for continued success. This citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate, attested, and copied thereafter, transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate, signed by Senate President Kieran E. Spilka, attested by Michael Hurley, the Clerk of the Court, and offered by me today on, actually, it says April 18th, but it's April 15th. Anyway, that's your official day, but thank you. Your work is very timely. Actually, we think next week, the governor's going to file a coastal resilience bill that probably is going to be borrowing and looking from a lot of the good work that's happened here in Chatham and across the region. So, your legacy continues. Thank you for your service.
And there's a letter of support for another grant we're going to be coming out with. Do I have to turn these back to?
No, those are.
Until Friday.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Yeah. For, okay, under the heading of, let me start with, on Friday at 8:30, I think it is, we have a farewell coffee for Ted, and that's at, that's here, is it not? Yeah. So, everybody's welcome to that. Under the heading of announcements, maybe a couple of words from the senator and, and the representative, just in terms of news that's relevant to us here in Chatham, we'd welcome a few brief comments.
Just say a few quick words and then let the senator provide more of a background and legislative update, but I just wanted to say hello, because for many folks, I may have met you on the campaign trail, but may not have seen you yet. In my role as rep, where I've been in now for over 100 days, so that's exciting. So, just saying hello to you all and the whole community, and making sure that folks know that I am readily out having office hours, including this Friday at the Eldridge Public Library from 1:00 to 2:30 PM. We're regularly putting those announcements up on my website and also sharing them in the Chronicle and other places. So, feel free to please reach out to me as I learn the role and get to work with the legislature. This is a very busy time of year. Obviously, we're about to go into budget week. There's a lot of anticipation around what lies ahead. But I am really eager to represent our seven towns and thrilled to be working with you all. So, I just wanted to say a quick hello and sort of reintroduce myself or introduce myself to folks I have not yet met. So, thank you.
Thanks very much.
And I will pass it off to the senator to give sort of a broader legislative update about some of the, our priorities and issues that we're facing.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Hadley. 100 days, 100-day, 100 days I'm celebrating, at least those 100 days. But Hadley's really hit the ground running and been an extraordinary partner to me, to our whole Cape and Islands delegation, which we work in a very strong, collaborative, bipartisan manner to address the challenges facing the region. So, a number of updates related to both implementation of a number of laws that have been passed, and then some things that we're working on coming up ahead. The first relates to housing and the housing crisis, and I should start off by saying a real kudos to Chatham for really being proactive, especially in recent years, around having just real, a lot more momentum around addressing the scope of the challenge that we face. The reality is that towns like Chatham and towns across Cape Cod and the islands are going to have to figure out a way in the years to come, not just to subsidize housing for people of low income and below, you know, below arre mean in income. And we should say, we had a fantastic tour. Was it two weeks ago or last week? I don't know. We're doing a lot, but we had Housing Secretary Ed Augustus here on the Cape, and we did a visit to the Chatham Housing Authority and talk about a well-run, well-maintained, extraordinarily well-staffed housing authority. That is not true of all of the housing authorities on Cape Cod. So, we are very grateful for the warm reception here in Chatham. And, you know, you folks have been clearly doing a lot in recent years, and I think it's really been welcome to see, and I think really meeting the moment around the challenge we're going to face in the years and decades ahead, where we're going to have to find a way to subsidize housing for most all year-round working people who don't yet own a home or are going to inherit a home. And it's a tremendously difficult task for, for our small towns. And so, what we have been aiming to do over the last several sessions is to really bring significant resources and tools to towns like Chatham to meet this challenge. And I want to briefly talk about the seasonal communities policy designation that was contained in the Affordable Homes Act. Affordable Homes Act is a $5.1 billion investment in housing in Massachusetts. Governor signed it into law in August. A whole host of investments in housing, 50 policy initiatives, including accessory dwelling units by right, other statewide policies and programs. Included in that was the seasonal communities designation. This goes to towns like Chatham where 35% or more of the housing stock is seasonal. You automatically receive this designation. And within the designation, I don't know if folks have heard of the Gateway Cities designation ever. This is what's a number about mid-sized, struggling cities in Massachusetts receive. And there's a whole host of policies, benefits, things that they're able to do that they couldn't otherwise do. So, seasonal communities is a very sort of similar framework. It's a toolkit. And so, what we did, the governor first filed, included seasonal communities in the base bill that she filed. The House supported it, the Senate expanded on it, and it was, it sustained in the final bill. So, what we did is we took sort of a whole host of home rule petitions, right? Chatham has had a longstanding home rule petition to establish a year-round housing trust, right? To have the ability for the town to provide subsidy for housing above arre mean in income, right? An increasing need. Chatham's been a real leader here at Chatham, the third community really follows suit, wanting to do what Antucket and Provinson has done. What seasonal communities does is now you don't have to go through that home rule process to establish a year-round housing trust. You're able to do it. You don't have to go through a home rule process to have year-round occupancy restrictions, year-round deed restrictions in perpetuity. Currently, the town could do it maybe for about 30 years, but not more than that. Seasonal communities is going to enable a town like Chatham to provide housing for your municipal workers. The law provides basically the authority for the town to be able to do that without running a file of federal fair housing. Towns are also able to, year-round deed restrictions, municipal housing, and there's a number of other policies that are included in there. This is really great stuff. You guys asked us to do this. I think you're going to be voting for this at your town meeting. The one, the one, the controversial piece, it's not controversial, it's just some people don't like it, is seasonal communities are able to raise the threshold of their residential property tax exemption. That threshold currently is set at 35%. A seasonal community can go up to 50%. In my neck of the woods, in the outer Cape, we've heard some feedback, let's just say, from our friends who are fortunate to own second, third, and fourth homes. And, but really, this is a local option, a decision that you could make. We really see the residential property tax exemption as a tool that, you know, towns may look to, you know, in the years ahead, say you have a really big cost associated with, this example's not going to work for Chatham because you invested in sewer, but say you had a really big sewer project, you needed to finance that, you could use residential property tax exemption. So, this is a huge policy victory. It's arguably the biggest thing we've gotten done for Cape Cod and Island towns since the establishment of the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund, which Chatham has benefited from. There are two bylaw requirements under seasonal communities. Everything else is optional, but the two bylaw requirements are adopting a bylaw for tiny homes, basically allowing small-scale ADU, and also a provision around under, the ability to use undersized and merger lots for year-round housing. These bylaws are not, do not yet have to be in effect, and basically, the town will have time to write bylaws that, that meet your needs. When you look at the housing crisis, right, there's no one silver bullet that's going to fix this. And so, what seasonal communities is really designed to do is to give you tools, to have a year-round housing trust that can provide subsidy for, you basically, below-market housing for year-round people, those year-round occupancy restrictions, the ability for municipal workers. You know, you could, you could actually use housing dollars to do a biannual housing needs assessment if you want to, you know, getting funding for that can be difficult. And then those two bylaw requirements. So, this is a sort of a significant policy opportunity for Chatham and for most all towns, at least on the lower, all towns on the lower and outer Cape. So, more to come, but let us know if you have questions on that. This is a very exciting opportunity. On wastewater, we continue to do, you know, really continue to work on this issue, Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund. Of course, to date, has awarded over $240 million in other people's money to subsidize wastewater projects across Cape Cod. Chatham, of course, has mostly benefited from being able to refinance your debt from the existing sewer, but this is helping projects in Harwich, this is helping projects in Orleans, and this has been a real game changer. The now challenge that we have is the state revolving loan fund, which is, you know, how often these projects are financed. The draft intended use plan put a cap of $50 million on projects and wasn't allowing projects to be carried over. Hadley and I, with the rest of the delegation, worked to really flag that concern, and in the final intended use plan, carryover is allowed. We were able to circumvent those caps. I think we are going to continue to see challenges in wastewater financing. In the years ahead, there's some uncertainty, certainly what happens from federal resources, and really, the state program is oversubscribed. In part, you know, the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund has made such a difference in getting Cape towns to follow the suit of Chatham. Chatham was an early leader in wastewater. But, you know, I think that's been but, you know, I think that's been an exciting development. And then just a few updates. It is April 15th, which is Tax Day, for those of you who haven't filed your taxes. But I do want to provide a bit of an update that last session, we did historic $1 billion in tax relief for working families across Massachusetts. And there's a number of provisions that I want to make sure the board and the general public is aware of. The first is a good landlord tax credit. This is something I authored with Senator Lydia Edwards. This is a local option property tax exemption that towns can make available to property owners who rent their residential units to income qualifying persons. That qualification can go up to 200% AMI. So this is really intended to be a local option property tax exemption that incentivizes and also sort of thanks long-term, you know, landlords who are renting, you know, year-round. It's a tool there. I mentioned the residential property tax exemption increase, the senior citizen circuit breaker tax increase. This actually, the Senate led the way in doubling this, the, from $1,200 to $2,400. And so this is something that senior citizens can rely on who are struggling with property taxes. We also doubled the senior property tax volunteer program, and we're working to fix the veterans' property tax work-off program. That's from a municipal perspective, of course, the broader tax relief package, you know, doubled earned income child tax credit, doubled other tax credits, and actually, another piece was a tripling of the Title V subject tax credit and applying that tax credit to sewer hookups. Probably small comfort to Chatham residents who've already probably did this five or 10 years ago, but again, really making the difference around trying to continue to bring investments in wastewater. So that's a brief update. You know, we continue to monitor and work towards, you know, being nimble and responsive in a very difficult and uncertain and chaotic federal government. The Senate in these last weeks has launched a Response 2025, where we are advancing policies that defend our residents, that protect our values, and that lead Massachusetts. This week, we released actually legislation related to healthcare. I expect you will see us move forward in a number of other areas prohibiting offshore drilling. We're concerned, I'm very concerned about offshore drilling, coming to New England. We're very concerned about book banning and book ban attempts. Massachusetts, the fourth largest, fourth highest number of book ban attempts in the country is in Massachusetts. We've actually been at the Eldridge Library twice. With librarians, we're very concerned about this, and a whole host of other things we'll be working on. So really appreciate your service and partnership. If there's anything y'all need help, you know, we're in good touch on a number of issues, but if there's anything we need, you know, you need assistance with. I do want to mention, I don't know if this issue has come up in Chatham because I don't know how much built environment you have in the national park, but there was some question about the statewide by right for accessory dwelling units and that conflicting with national park, national park building standards and bylaws. This is mostly a problem in East Amtruro and Wallfleet, but in the final regulations implementing this at the state level, it basically says that any federal law or, you know, rules sort of supersede. So in the instance, you do have parcels or properties that are located in the national park here in Chatham. I'm not sure if you do. You might have a few shacks, but they would not be able to build an accessory dwelling unit, so just wanted to provide that information in case you were asked.
Thank you. That's very comprehensive. We really appreciate it. And thanks for coming. Thanks on behalf of Ted for your being here to give him your certifications, personally. Very much appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Shereen, you wanted to make a comment?
I did it when Ted was still in the room, so I'll just, I'll just send it to him personally. Thank you.
Okay, okay. All right. Thanks again to the legislative group. Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Can we get a reading of the notice, please?
Sure. Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 15, 2025, at 5:30 p.m. in the large meeting room at Town Office Annex 261 George Ryder Road, Chatham, and remotely via Microsoft Teams platform to consider the transfer of the annual all-alcohol beverage package store license from Eric, and Eric, I apologize if I do not say your last name, Payon, all right, Senior, doing business as Chatham Light Liquors. Eric Payon, Senior Manager to Portside Liquors, Chatham, Inc., doing business as Portside Liquors. George Metry, Manager for the Business, located at 303 Orleans Road, North Chatham. All interested parties are encouraged to participate. Sign the Select Board.
Thank you. And do we have Mr. Metry here to please step up to the podium?
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm his wife, Zainah.
Hello, welcome as well. Can you just tell us a little bit about the transfer and what you're doing and so forth?
So just a basic transfer. Eric is going to be the mentor, and we've taken over the stores. This is not the first store that we own. We kind of know what we're doing a little bit, and with Eric's help, I think it's got to be a great move.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions from the board? Dean?
Yeah, I have no problem. I'm supportive of this. I just, Shana, I noticed that in the application on page two, there are a couple of questions that need to be filled in on citizenship and residence. Those boxes weren't checked.
I, yes, we'll review the application before it's forwarded to the AVCC.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the transfer.
I think before we do that, I appreciate that, but I think we have to offer the, and are delighted to offer the public an opportunity to inquire or comment. Anybody here in the room, online? I don't see anybody there either, so Mr. Dykens?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the transfer.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And Mr. Schelz is aye. Thanks very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
And we look forward to your success.
Thank you.
Next is, I believe, public comment, sorry, Chatham Wells, Mr. Failey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rob Failey, Director of Public Works. I'll briefly go over the status of wells for the month of March. So wells have been running primarily three to five hours per day, and the water storage tanks did not hit the low-level alarm this month. The training field well project is coming along nicely. The interior, the exterior brickwork has begun. The doors and window frames have been installed, and the green sand filters have been installed as well. For Mill Pond wells 10 and 11, so well 10, we're getting closer all the time. The Energy and Environmental Affairs Office has been working with Town Council, and we are working through the final edits. We are going to do a title search just to clarify land ownership where the conservation easement sits because it wasn't exactly 100% clear. So we just want to make sure we have all the i's dotted and t's crossed before we move forward.
Yeah, sorry.
So, Rob, you think it's going to be online for the summer?
I hope so.
Yeah, well, it's April, it may, June, I mean, yeah.
I think we should be, although we are seeing some, you know, low levels of PFOS creeping into well 10, too. I don't know if that has to do with the drought conditions we've seen recently. That was an early 2025 test that we had done on that well. So, well, it remains to be seen.
Okay, thanks.
Just water sampling, all the, all the samples came back free of bacteria. Just our ongoing station maintenance and system maintenance. Everything is moving along nicely. Violi is doing a great job of keeping up with things. And same with the meter readings and compliance. Big thing started in March. We started a, ON TAP is the title of our newsletter, so it has important information for residents of Chatham about the health of our water and just kind of timely reminders for, you know, hydrant flushing, things of that nature that we're doing around town. So just, it's going to be a monthly newsletter that we put out.
Shereen?
How do folks get the newsletters? Is it an automatic to all the water users, by mail or email?
I believe it's on social media, and we also put it on our website.
Okay, thank you.
So this is our, our monthly comparison with March of 2024. Nothing out of the ordinary. We're about a million gallons lower than this time last year, which is about 5%. No major anomalies or anything like that that I've noticed. And again, this is just a graphical representation of the same. March 25 is in the pink. Other than some daily fluctuations, things are pretty consistent with last year. A little bit, a little bit lower, and I think that may have to do with some of the cooler weather we've been seeing in March. Again, same thing here. March 2025 is in the red, just daily fluctuations. And this is the sheet that shows what each well has contributed to Chatham's water over the past month. Average of just over 500,000 gallons per day. You can still see that consistently, South Chatham wells are the, the big contributor to Chatham's water.
And the hole there and for the other wells, other than Mill Hill, 10 and 11?
So we are still doing seasonal maintenance before we get ready for summer, so we shut wells down on occasion just to do some, some maintenance on the cleaning and things of that nature.
Thank you.
And Rob, the Mill Hill roads, 10 and 11, that's just 11.
So on the Mill Hill roadside, it's just 11 there, you record?
Correct, that's correct.
They're kind of averaging around 2 million gallons each well. Even if you take South Chatham divided by three, I mean, it's interesting.
And they're, and they're not pumping at capacity now. We're only just doing several hours a day, so.
Got it, yeah. Three to five is nothing, is it? Okay.
And here again is a bar chart just showing the same level of effort. This is our year-to-date information. See, we're already at 45 million gallons by the end of March. And again, this is just the year-to-date information, the level of effort for each well. This is our five-year comparison. Again, it's a little low this month compared to previous years. I think it may just be due to the weather. You see, our pumping hours are a little bit higher, and I think it's just because we don't have all the wells up and running. You do, we're in seasonal maintenance and things of that nature, so they may be pumping a little bit longer. And here's our observation well data. I put some red lines on there. So if we look at, this was taken on April 9th, when this report was done, carried across the vertical red lines are April 9th for each year approximate, and the horizontal red line is where we are today. So you can see that we are in a pretty drastic deficit. Even for some of those drought years, 2021 and 22, we are still recharging at a slower rate than we have in the past five years. So that's a little troubling. We are seeing a lot more rainfall now in April, but we'll see. It is a little concerning. I wanted to put it out there for your attention. We'll discuss it again in a few more minutes. And this is for Brewster, which is, again, more of the bellwether of water levels on this part of the Cape. We are very low from where we should be. We are recharging, but it's, you could see in 2023, we have already started the seasonal decline this time of year in 2023. So my hope is that we continue recharging before we see any seasonal decline. We really need that graph to tick upwards quite a bit to get into a place where we're at a comfortable water level.
Rob, do you know if 2022 was sort of a weather-like drought scenario at all?
I believe it was 20-
Two, is that when we were-
The tail end of '21 and '22 was the big drought year.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I'm sorry. Remind me again, the horizontal line is?
That's, that's where we are today, or as of the date of this report on April 9th.
Got it, got it.
So there's a lot of words here. I'll just summarize briefly. So the Massachusetts Drought Task Force met on April 8th to discuss drought conditions. All of the Cape and Islands have not released this, and this, sorry, let me preface that with, this only goes through the end of March. So they're taking a look back. It doesn't include any of the precipitation we've seen in April so far. So every area in Massachusetts has improved except for Cape and the Islands. We're holding steady, but we're not getting worse and we're not improving. So they left us at a Level 2 significant drought. Soon, as vegetation greens up, a lot of the water that does fall that would normally recharge the aquifer is going to be drawn up by vegetation. So there's a point where we have to start making some difficult decisions. I had this discussion with the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee yesterday. They're going to make a recommendation and formalize that recommendation that I'll bring to the Select Board at the next meeting, but I just wanted to get it on your radar. This was the drought matrix that was discussed. You know, we were at a Level 2 significant drought, but we are not pumping anywhere near 18 hours per day. So, so there's probably a little bit of nuance there where we may be able to play with some of the restrictions that we may place, but we just wanted to get it, get you folks talking about it and thinking about it because it is something that we have on the tentative agenda for April 29th. And that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Any questions? No? Thanks, thanks, Rob.
Okay, thank you.
So now, I will, I'll invite public comments, but before I do that, I'll just quickly run through the business agenda. We have an Arbor Day proclamation. We have a consider, a request for use of the town hall basement on, on New Year's Eve. We have a one-day entertainment license, a series of one-day entertainment licenses and alcohol permits. There are, I don't know, there are about 10 or 12 of those. We have a request for removal of restricted parking in front of 513 Main Street. We have a recommendation for an updated Parks and Rec, Parks and Beaches and North Beach Island rules and regulations. We have a proposal to adopt a town facility use policy, first read. We have housing development test fits for the former Ellis property at 127 Old Harbor Road. Public comment will be invited and allowed at that point, although if anybody feels they don't want to stay that late, you can make your comments along with the other public comment. And then finally, we have one committee appointment to the Economic Development Advisory Committee. So I will invite in the room to begin any public comments on the agenda. Yes, Ms. Timson?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Ann Timson, Stage Harbor Road, Chatham. I'm here to voice my and my neighbors' concerns about business agenda item C, referring to a total of nine entertainment and, in some cases, alcohol licenses at the Atwood Museum. Here is a bullet point list of problems we, as Stage Harbor property owners, are faced with if you allow all of these licenses to be approved. Number one, in the past, these Atwood concerts were performed in the afternoon. We request a return to that schedule and no nighttime concerts. Our street is zoned strictly residential. We have over 10 children, two years old or under, just in the block around the museum, and many a few years older than that. They are not on adult bedtime schedules. The hours for these concerts are too late for little children. Number two, we request no amplification whatsoever for any concert, even with insulation in a recently constructed home and all the windows shut. The music that is amplified is loud enough to interrupt conversation and sleep. Our street is zoned residential, not commercial. Our street is zoned residential, not commercial. Amplified music, one night after another in July and August, more than once a week, is against our zoning laws, in my opinion. We put up with the huge, over-wide, double-decker buses that park on the street in front of the museum, but we cannot support amplification. It belongs on Main Street in a commercial environment. In past, we've had to reseed our grass after the Atwood events and try to dig out the ruts that attendees leave on our front lawns. We request no parking on our private property. We like to keep our streetscape attractive for those who live here and who walk and bike the loop every day. Concert parking also leads to a danger to people on bikes and walking. There are plenty of rentable locations, such as the community center or the beach club, where these events could be held and they would provide legal parking spaces for all. This select board has stated they want to support young families settling in Chatham. Stage Harbor is a family street. Many young families with small children have invested in this area because it is a beautiful rural area. If you allow it to become a commercial event destination, you will lose those you most want to attract. Please consider change of time, alternate locations, and the number of concerts in one week or even throughout the whole summer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments on the business agenda? Okay, we'll start with the Arbor Day twenty-five proclamation.
Joan, have a comment?
Oh, I'm oh, you have a com- oh, forgive me. You have a comment? Oh, please. Sorry.
It's okay. Joan Craig, I'm not speaking for the Traffic Safety Committee. I want to make that very clear. I'm speaking again before you. As a citizen, I live on Indian Hill Road, and I am in support of removing the parking situation in front of the restaurant. I'm sorry, I don't know the address that you have on your agenda. I speak for many people. I speak for some businesses. I am not a professional with regards to where we can have some, what I call, cut-through areas on both sides of Main Street so that individuals who are picking up or dropping off can slide into that area and then leave, as can vans, et cetera, that might be dropping off packages to the retailers. Just the other day, I was downtown, and even though there was an area close by that an individual could have gone in to leave the car or the van, there was a UPS and or it may not have been UPS, but it was one of those mail vans that was double parked on Main Street, which is also a danger that we're all aware of. I feel very strongly, as I mentioned the last time we spoke about this, that all businesses deserve to have some priorities, not just that particular area. I also feel that three parking spaces is not appropriate. I think when you look at those areas and some of the end, what I would call the end units, that then have, and I don't know the correct term, but it's yellow markings that show no parking, that maybe we could do something with those at corner units so that people could park, drop off, pick up, et cetera. I have a family who did park in front of the establishment in the hours that it wasn't allowed to go into that particular restaurant. They were told they had to move the car or it would be towed. That restaurant lost a very nice family. They have said they will never go in there again because they felt it was not appropriate. I don't think any business has a priority in this town, and I would like to see it be fairly spread out on both sides of the street so that there are areas, both at the beginning of Main and further down on Main, on both sides, that individuals can pick up, drop off, as can vans, mail services, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments online? I don't see any others. So now we can go to the Arbor Day proclamation. Mr. Dan?
Good evening. My name is Dan Young from Friends of Trees. My proclamation Arbor Day will be April twenty-fifth, and this will be Chatham's fourteenth. Chatham has a Tree City USA designation, and we can all be proud of this. To earn a designation, cities must meet four standards established by the Arbor Day Foundation. First, have a department responsible for Chatham's trees. We have this. Second, have a tree care ordinance. We have a tree bylaw. Third, the town should have budgeting and expenditure commitments for tree care. We have this as well. Fourth, have an Arbor Day proclamation and hold Arbor Day activities. Chatham has and continues to satisfy all four standards. We have an opportunity to build on this designation. We can increase our urban canopy and prevent its reduction, whether these trees are along our streets, on residential properties, or other town-owned land. J. Sterling Morton, who originally proposed Arbor Day, said, quote, "Other holidays repose upon the past. Arbor Day proposes for the future," unquote. So let's celebrate Arbor Day, and as advocated by J. Sterling Morton, look toward the future by planting trees and protecting our existing trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
In the spirit of J. Morton, was it?
J. Sterling Morton.
Sterling Morton, a great name. I move to proclaim Friday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five as Arbor Day in Chatham, Mass.
Second?
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
And Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Yeah, I let's.
Have the clerk read them?
Oh, you're gonna make her read it.
It's fine, I'll read it. No, I think it's important that the community hear it. So.
We usually do read it.
That's my job. Twenty twenty-five Arbor Day proclamation for the town of Chatham. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first celebrated with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed through the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce soil erosion caused by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide wildlife habitat. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, mitigate the impacts of climate change, enhance business areas, beautify our community, boost mental health, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal wherever they are planted. Now, therefore, we, the select board of the town of Chatham, do hereby proclaim Friday, April two thousand twenty-five as Arbor Day in the town of Chatham, Massachusetts. Further, we urge all citizens to celebrate Chatham's Arbor Day on April twenty-fifth by planting a tree, sitting beneath one, or taking a walk in the woods, or in one of Chatham's beautiful parks, appreciating trees for all they do for us, our town, and our planet.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Motion and a vote?
Well, we did it. We will do it again. I'll consider the motion made. I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye, again.
And Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I I think Arbor Day is solidly established at April twenty-five. Next case, we have a request for use of the town hall basement meeting room for First Night Chatham. Ms. Santulo?
Good evening. Yes, my name is Bunny Santulo, and I am here representing First Night Chatham. And we would just again like to request the use of the town hall basement meeting room for event space for Wednesday, December thirty-first, from two to ten.
Thank you. I I think we hashed this one out pretty thoroughly last year, but if there are any questions, otherwise I'll take a motion.
I think they're really on their game. I move approval.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
They're all good. Okay. So we have a series of entertainment and alcohol license applications. Mr. Wright, Executive Director of the Chatham Historical Society, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. I appreciate taking the time to hear us. And thank you very much for your concerns. I duly noted. Just so everyone knows that of the concerts that we are proposing for twenty twenty-five, we've reduced them from nine down to six. Five, the four of the six are going to be indoor concerts, one of which will be at St. Christopher's. So there's only three concerts indoors. There are two concerts that are planned for outdoors. I do know that there was a mistake on the form that I filled out. The one on the twenty-second should be the twenty-first, Monday, the twenty-first. We had a conflict with the artists, so we had to move that.
July twenty-one?
In July twenty-one, yeah. Don't feel too bad. We had a brochure printed, and it's got two different dates. So I have to deal with that nightmare. But so, yeah, we have that. We are no longer using the Cape Destination buses for the two outdoor concerts. We've been donated two of the vans from the COA, so the size won't be as well an issue. To be perfectly honest, it is an outdoor concert, where we have seating for a hundred people. It starts, the outdoor concert starts at six o'clock and is usually done between eight and eight-thirty before it's a real evening event. It's more of an early evening event. And so I hope you'll consider continuing this. This will be our fourth year doing that event. The other event that we have is our annual gala. It's our largest fundraiser, Evening to Remember. That's on the nineteenth of July. Again, that will be on on the on the front lawn. We will be having buses and trolley service for that event as well. So hopefully, we'll reduce the amount of parking on the street and so on. There'll be police detail to reduce that amount of traffic at the actual museum for that night. We do are looking for also entertainment. It's just the jazz trio, same ones I played last year. Bart Weissman and his jazz trio will be performing, so it's not extremely ruckus music that's playing at the Evening to Remember. And it's on the nineteenth of July, as I mentioned before. The other thing that I want to bring up is on May sixth, we were collaborating with the Cape Cod Hospital Auxiliary and having to put together a benefit concert that would be performed at St. Christopher's. And that's to raise money for cancer care services at Cape Cod Hospital and the music program at the Atwood Museum, Chatham Historical Society. That one is, again, indoors, not on our property. And it's a really, we think it's a really good cause. We're having wine donated for that event from Chatham Light Liquors. And we have some really good talent coming to try to raise money for a really good cause. So that's all I have for you today.
Questions? Dean?
Yeah, thank you. I should just mention, I'm a member of the Historical Society, but I am not an officer or director or trustee, and I do have a standing disclosure form on file with the town clerk. I just wanted to make sure I understood. I was a little bit confused. By the way, that one that you had corrected, wouldn't that be August twenty-one, not July twenty-one?
No, July twenty-first is a, no, July twenty-first is a Monday. So it's a twenty, we have a outdoor concert on July twenty-first and July twenty-fourth.
Yeah, one of the.
It's marked twenty-second, I believe, on the.
Yeah, one of them says that the date of entertainment is the twentieth. It says it says February twentieth, which was an error. And so whatever it is, I'm sure you and Shauna will get that corrected. Yeah, but that date was repeated twice. So I'll leave that for you and Shauna to straighten out. So I just want to get to the the number of concerts that are going to be outdoors on your lawn. How many of those will be?
Two, two outdoor concerts.
And when will they be?
July twenty-first and July twenty-fourth.
Okay, and those will run from six-thirty to?
From six, six o'clock till eight o'clock.
Okay.
Different on here.
Yeah.
It's a little different in the.
Six to eight.
Our memo says six to eight. So I'm sorry, six-thirty to eight-thirty. So six to eight is the correct?
So the gates open at five-thirty. The concert starts at six. And then they run around an hour and a half to two hours usually.
Yeah, the one on the twenty-fourth says six-thirty to nine-thirty. So those are those are the wrong times. Okay.
I apologize. I just turned sixty-five. I'm losing my marbles.
So the and and those outdoor concerts, the entertainment, will they, one of them was a jazz trio?
The first, no, the jazz trio is is complimentary music at our Evening to Remember event on the nineteenth.
Okay.
Which is Saturday. The concert on the twenty-first is the the Pianoman. It's a band that tributes to Elton John and Billy Joel.
Will that be amplified?
That will be amplified, yes.
The other one will not be amplified, so.
All the concert, all the concerts will be amplified, yes.
Did you?
Outdoor.
At your concerts last year, did you have amplification?
We did.
Did you have any complaints that you're aware of?
Not that I was aware of, no.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any other questions.
So I just for I I've noticed Dean is working off of, I think, the agenda. And I've been looking at the staff memo, and they're not consistent. So.
I'll check with Shauna.
Well, before we vote, I think we're going to have to agree what the times are. And I would suggest we use the staff memo, because that seems a little closer to what he's been saying than 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 the the agenda. But we need to, so just if I may, well, other questions? Well, all right, you go ahead if you want to do it.
Yeah, we need to get the times right before we go.
Well, I I was gonna go through and and just clarify top to bottom, but if you.
I just have one question about the piano concert.
Yes.
Is it under attended all, Kevin?
Yeah, both of those outdoor con, yeah, all three events on our lawn, Evening to Remember and the two outdoor concerts are under attend.
Do you have the capability of putting up, you know, clear sheets on the roadside or to be able to buffer noise at all?
Possibly. I'd have to check with the ten company, yeah.
Okay.
All right, if I may, I just want to run through what we have so that we're all on the same page. And I'll do it slowly. The first one is May sixth, from six-thirty to eight at St. Christopher's Church.
Yes.
Next is June twenty-sixth, six to seven-thirty at the Atwood Museum.
That's indoors, correct.
Okay, indoors. July nineteenth from five to seven-thirty at the Atwood Museum.
That's our Evening to Remember, correct.
Also indoors?
That's outdoors. That's our annual gala.
Okay, outdoors. Now, you've given us July twenty-one.
July twenty-first, right.
From six to eight at the Atwood Museum.
I believe it's from six to eight, yes.
Okay. July twenty-four? I think you said those were outdoors.
The twenty-first is an outdoor concert?
Kevin, are you sure? It's it's six?
I'm getting confused here myself.
So it looks like the only typo I'm seeing is the July twenty-fourth. I mistakenly wrote nine-thirty instead of eight-thirty. July twenty-one, according to the application, is six-thirty to eight-thirty. And July twenty.
So maybe it's the in maybe the outdoor concerts are, the gates open at six and they begin at six-thirty. And then the indoor concerts, it's five-thirty, the the doors open and the concerts start at six. Is that what you had, Kathy, I think? It looks like, yeah. So I apologize. I'm getting mixed up myself. So, yeah, all indoor concerts. It looks like, yeah. So, I apologize. I'm getting mixed up myself. So, yeah, all indoor concerts, they begin at 6:00 with the gate. The doors opening at 5:30. The two outdoor concerts with, uh, gates would open at 6:00 and the concerts would start at 6:30. My apologies.
Well, I, I, we, we don't have that distinction of indoor, outdoor, other than what you've told us, and, uh, so I guess it would be helpful if we could just clarify what the times are. So, we're, we're, we're going back. The 21st and the 24th are 6:30 to 8:30?
Correct.
Okay.
Both of those are noted as outdoor concerts.
Okay. Um, the 7th of August is 6:00 to 7:30 at the Atwood Museum?
Yes, that's an indoor concert.
Okay. The 21st of August is also 6:00 to 8, 7:30 at the St. Christopher's Church?
That's correct.
Okay, and September 11th is 6:00 to 7:30 at the Atwood Museum?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I think, I mean, I, I, that's in, that's indoor, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so I'm showing three outdoors, the 19th of July.
19th is the annual gala. That's not an actual concert, so.
Okay.
But it has music.
It has music. It has the, uh, wait, Bart Weissman Trio, correct.
Is that amplified?
I believe so, but it's more background music, 'cause we're doing auctions and, and stuff like that, so.
Thank you for clarifying.
But you're right. It's three outdoor, not two. Okay. All right. Are we all squared away with the entertainment aspect here?
The only, I just have one question.
Yep, please.
In terms of parking, um, is there parking, do you park on Stage Harbor Road, or is there parking elsewhere?
There'll be, there'll be parking, uh, the goal is that we'll let people know that we'll have a free transfer, um, uh, from the middle school for these concerts, and that, you know, we will have some parking in our parking lot. Uh, we allow people to sort of park on Stage Harbor in front of the museum. So, that's where we have it.
I, I would just, you know, and, and with respect to the neighbors, I would just strongly urge and, and incentivize folks to park, you know, at the middle school and get bussed in.
Yeah.
Especially for your gala. That's a big deal. That, that, that's a, that's a big event.
Yeah. Yeah, it is a big event, and it's been, you know, and there were roughly anywhere from 200 to 225 people, so it does become an issue, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, well, you have to respect the neighborhood, and so, you know, I would say, you know, you gotta park it. I would say you park off-site and get bussed in. Wastepond even. And the, and the only other comment I have is, is I understand it's a wonderful asset in town. It's great. But the, the live concerts outside that are amplified, and there's no way you can do 6:00 to 8:00 rather than 6:30 to 8:30, or? Just, just, again, with respect to the, to the neighborhood, 8:00 is, you know, just with respect to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I can take a look at that and definitely, if we need to change it, to make them earlier in the outdoor concerts, we can try to do that.
My, my strong proclivity would be 6:00 to 8:00 for the amplified music outside. That, that, that's all. I mean, I'm not, I don't wanna hamper your operation.
I, I can make that happen.
It's a wonderful asset.
Okay.
I mean, you just have to, you have to, you're in a neighborhood. Thanks.
Okay.
So, we're gonna go for the 21st and the 24th, we're going back to 6:00 to 8:00.
We'll make, well, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right, with those clarifications. Do I hear a motion?
Are you gonna take up the alcohol permits?
Oh, well, I, I, I was gonna do the, um.
Just do the entertainment.
The entertainment first.
All right. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the entertainment licenses with the modifications that you just pronounced.
That we've discussed, yes, here. Yes.
Second?
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
And Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Okay. Um, now, the, uh, just to run through the alcohol, uh, permits, same, are they, no, they are not the.
There, there is one edit versus the agenda. July 19th should be 7:30, 5:00 to 7:30, and then the date changed July 22nd to July 21st. All the other times are correct and locations are correct. It was just.
And we're, we're looking at the staff memo?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the four special one-day alcohol licenses as outlined in the staff report to Kevin Wright, Executive Director of the Chatham Historical.
With the one amendment.
The one amendment, that's July 21st rather than July 22nd.
Second?
All those in favor, Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Next, um, we have the, uh, proposed removal of restricted parking in front of 513 Main Street. Katie, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Katie Donovan, Director of Community Development. There was a request brought to the board on September 10th of last year to have the restricted parking in front of 513 Main Street removed. Uh, the select board at that time had requested input from the Parking Solutions Working Group, who did hold a meeting on October 18th. Um, they, they are in favor of that recommendation. Um, at that meeting, the working group also had recommended that staff look at other potential areas, um, as mentioned by a previous speaker earlier, um, to look at other areas along Main Street that would work for pickup and drop-off or short-term delivery parking. As we are still awaiting the traffic circulation, traffic circulation and parking study from the Cape Cod Commission, staff, um, feels that it's best to wait to see what those recommendations are before recommending any further changes to Main Street at this time. So, our only recommendation at this time is to remove the restricted parking in front of 513 Main Street.
Any questions or comments? Before you make a motion, if, if that's where you're headed, do you have a question? Oh, I, I, I just wanna note for, for the rec, I'm sorry? Oh, please, please.
No, I just think it's a matter of parity and fairness. Um, um, the, um, you know, COVID-19 pandemic gave rise to this, you know, to this spot, and I think it's, it's time, um, you know, we kind of level the playing field for all the establishments downtown. I, I, I think the establishments, and I'm not talking in particular to this establishment, but they have parking out back for employees and for managers and owners and stuff, so maybe there could be something worked out behind the building and for, for picking up. I, I'm making it up, but I just had some thoughts today. Thanks.
Well, actually, you're not, because when he was here to speak to that, that issue was raised. He didn't entirely dismiss it as impractical, but, um, he was, he, he was happier with what he had at the, at that time. But that, that, that was, that suggestion was made.
Yep.
I, I, I have one, I just wanna lodge a comment, uh, on behalf of the, uh, Committee for People on, uh, with Disabilities. Um, and, and they've asked me to note that they have for some time been seeking, um, a drop-off point in front of the Orpheum, which involves apparently, I'm, I'm not fully apprised of what the details are, but it may, uh, uh, and it certainly will involve one or more parking places, but, um, a curb cut, but there seems to be a fair amount of, of, um, sentiment that that is something that would make life a lot easier for folks with disabilities who wanna go to the Orpheum. So, I, I'll just leave you with that, um, suggestion or recommendation from the committee, but also with my, um, uninformed endorsement, I'll put it that way.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we've had conversations, um, with folks in the past and had advised them, um, you know, to bring forth any, uh, requests to the board, um, as you are the authority making those recommendations, um, and those decisions. So, I'm happy to, um, look at that when we look at, uh, what other recommendations are made by the Cape Cod Commission and with the Park Solution, Parking Solutions Working Group and bring those back to you as well.
Yeah, and that was the context in which I was invited to make the comment, was as you are looking at the other opportunities, please include that one.
Great. Thank you.
So, anything else? Uh, I'll take a motion.
I move to direct to the Department of Public Works staff to remove the restricted parking in front of 513 Main Street.
Second?
All those in favor, uh, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
And Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, um, we have a recommendation of, um, updated parks and, and beaches in North Beach Island rules and regulations. Amy Howell, welcome.
Good evening. Okay, so you have in front of you, uh, updated, uh, beach rules and regs. Uh, while the goal is every two years for the Parks and Rec Commission to review them, due to COVID and staffing changes, these have not been reviewed since 2018. Uh, so, we looked at them last fall, uh, with the Parks and Rec Commission over fall meetings and winter meetings, and what you have in front of you is what they have reviewed and recommended. The majority of the changes are just focused on the department configurations the town, uh, has done, uh, and the select board. So, you can see all the highlighted, um, differences, uh, which again is just really, uh, updating the correct names of departments. The only additional rule and reg you'll find, uh, at 316 is the no launching of drones on public beaches. So, that was the only additional rule that was added to this.
Questions? Uh, Shuri?
Um, Amy, thank you. Um, there's one thing that, that isn't in here, but it's one thing that's been like a thorn in my side a little bit, has been that, um, the pickleboard, uh, pickleball courts at Stepping Stone, Stone, yeah, Stepping Stone Road. Oftentimes, we drive by and the pickleball players are parking their cars in the basketball court. And there was an incident of one father that wanted to play basketball with his child, and he went to play basketball there, and he couldn't because there was cars parked there. Is there any way that that could be included in any regulations or somehow addressed? Maybe it's an agenda item for the Park and Rec. I don't know. But I've just, I, I think I've called it to your attention through Jill a couple of times, and I just wanna make sure that that's taken care of so everybody has a fair chance at all the courts that are in town.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and I, I think you're aware, we have a Friends of Pickleball group and we meet with them regularly, and that actually just came up because we are looking at, uh, starting, member play will come at the end of May. So, that came up, uh, and what we're doing is we are working on putting together a parking, uh, plan that will then go in front of the Parks and Rec Commission, and then we will present to, um, the select board as well. So, yes, we are aware and we are working on that.
Okay, great. Thanks for being proactive on that. I really appreciate it.
Jeff?
Um, Amy, great job. I certainly agree with the no launching of drones. I did have some potentially stupid questions, too. Uh, and it's, I guess it's been longstanding in the, in these rules and regs, but I just wanna get some clarification, I guess. No children under 13 years of age may attend any beach unless occupied by an adult. Well, what if a, a child 12 wants to go fishing at Schoolhouse, or, I mean, from the shore? I mean, is 13 an arbitrary cutoff? I mean, 12-year-olds like to fish, 11-year-olds, I mean, I don't know. I just, I used to fish when I was 12. You know, I, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
It seemed really restrictive to me.
I, so I think the goal of that, again, with all of these two, is, is they're there. I, I think the important thing is too, is like, no one's going around, you know, hunting for violations.
I understand.
They're there kind of as a tool, um, so that if something is happening, um, and it's inappropriate, that we have these rules to fall back on. Um, 13, um, as you said, that's been longstanding, so I'm assuming that the logic of that was they felt 13 was responsible enough at a beach to be by themselves.
Yeah.
Um, you know, but I can tell you, if, if people are, if, if children are following the rules and, and there's nothing happening, I, I don't, I wouldn't expect, you know, um, a, a complaint or town staff to, to ask for, I mean, they don't even have ID, so.
Gotcha, Amy. I mean, I, it's, it's, it's my bad. But anyway, I have one, I have one more. This is, uh, North Beach Island general rules and regs, use of rafts, tubes, inflatables, blah, blah, blah. No kites are permitted. Now, I gotta tell ya, once in a while, people fly a kite out there on North Beach. It's a fun place to do it, and they're easy to fly there, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
Again, I, it's for, so the, the whole point of a no kite flying, and you're gonna see it on a lot of beaches, right? If, if there's no one out there on the beach, no one's gonna go up to them, but the purpose is, if you're in a crowded area and people are flying a kite, what that can do is then when they lose control, and it can come crashing down and hit a patron and injure them. So, that's really the purpose of the no, uh, flight kying, or?
The kite flying.
No kite flying. Um, but I can tell you again, you know, if, if, on a nice windy day, no one's out, out the beach, no one's, no one's gonna go and enforce the rule. It's, it's there for, you know, if its conditions are, are there that it's a danger to fellow patrons.
Gotcha. Thank you, Amy. Nice job. Bear with me.
Anything else? Do we need a second reading?
Did we make any edits?
Do we make any edits that need, require that?
I haven't heard one.
Nope.
I move to approve the, uh, updated Parks and Recs and North Beach Island Rules and Regs as recommended by the Park and Rec Commission.
I'll second that.
Uh, I think that was Corey. Um, all those in favor, Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, so, the next one we have is the adoption of town facility use policy. Amy Howell, welcome back.
Thank you. Um, so, and kind of another policy that, uh, has been around for a long time. Uh, and town staff, uh, so the Community Services Department and the Town Manager's Office, last fall, after, uh, reviewing the current town policy, worked over the fall and winter months to draft the policy that you have in front of you. And really, the goal is to just streamline the process. We, as staff, have just felt that communication wasn't the best. Um, the, the, or I should say, the proper communication wasn't getting out for, you know, everything that would be required for an event, whether it's coming in front of the select board for an entertainment license, or a license to sell on town property, or permits for signs. Um, we thought it was getting kind of lost in the process, and so, um, together, we wanted to draft a policy that we felt would really streamline the process, and so you have that in front of you. There's kind of two parts to it. Um, so I'm gonna start with the form part. Um, so our prior form was one page. Um, and so, as you see now, you have two pages and then obviously a fee structure. Um, but we feel that the new form allows us to collect a lot more information, uh, about the events, uh, which again then is going to allow us, um, to, uh, know what the event is and be able to send it out to all the proper, uh, departments, commissions, boards, you know, for approval for the, um, for that specific request. Uh, and then the second part, uh, is just the facility use policy, 'cause so kind of the rules and regs of using, um, town property.
I, I have qual, I have, on the location, um, private function up to 50 participant side of this. Maybe I'm confused, but, um, maybe you can clarify, hopefully. Like Harding's Beach, I've, know there's two very popular events that occur there. One was, happened last Sunday. And then again, Montemoy does a towny party. How is that, how, where does that play into the restriction of an amount of people that are gonna attend an event?
Yep. So, um, we labeled it private event, so that really is more like weddings. You know, birthday parties, um, sometimes dinners, that, those type of events. And if you see below that table, it has public events.
Yeah.
Uh, slash fundraisers, and that would go, um.
Under that category.
So, those would fall under those, which automatically would need select board approval, where like a wedding, you know, 25-person wedding at Harding's would just go, you know, to the Parks and Rec Commission and wouldn't necessarily come to the select board.
Great. Thank you.
So, but i- is the, you're, you're saying you don't want any weddings that are more than 50 people?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, just following up on that. So, does that mean like on Chase Park, the Festival of the Arts, how, where does that fall?
So, that would fall under a public event fundraiser. So, there's no, so there's no table under that, um, because all of those are gonna come to you guys. Um, obviously, it's gonna go, you know, through the Park and Rec Commission and any other departments or anything, but ultimately, it would fall under your purview.
Okay, what about, what about the, uh, Kate Coold Park, um, the Shakespeare Festival, it's the last couple of summers?
the last couple of summers?
Public, another public event, yeah.
Okay, with that in mind, as I'm looking at your form, so the first matrix up at the top on, the first page that has matrices, matrices. So we're talking about private events here, for example, large event, 41-plus people, $300, $375. Does that apply to an event like the two that I just mentioned, or there's?
That would apply to all, to all events. And then obviously, if a fee waiver was requested, that would be.
So do we, do we charge the Festival of the Arts today?
We do not, oh, yes, we do right now, actually, yes.
What about?
It's $100.
What about the Shakespeare Festival? Do we charge them?
Shakespeare does not, no, no.
I would hope that that could continue to be free. I mean, they're providing a free public.
Yep.
Performance. I just had a suggestion on page three of the rules, under paragraph three. I think I would insert that at the very beginning, the word neither, so neither the event sponsor nor its representatives shall cause or permit any damages. Otherwise, it looks as though the event sponsor should affirmatively causes, is asked to, is allowed to cause damage. So I'd just insert the word neither.
Okay.
And then on page, this, page five, on the indemnification provision at the bottom, so we're holding harmless the officers of the town. I assume that includes the select board. If not, we should include the word officials or something like that. And after the word employees, I would insert, in the second line, I would insert agents, slash, agents, comma, contractors. So all of its officials, officers, and employees, agents, contractors. That would be my suggestion to cover us. I think that's it. I didn't have anything else. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'd like to just open it up a little bit about the private events, the, again, at the, at the beaches and the park. I'm just thinking of a wedding at Cape Cool Park where people show up for a 10 or 15-minute ceremony and, and then move on to something else. I find the number to be quite small for, for an event, you know, for Chase, for Cape Cool, Cape Cool Park. And then I find that the beach numbers are kind of arbitrary. I guess, Amy, when you guys were doing the matrix on this and figuring out the number, was it based on some, like, parking or accessibility, square footage of the beach, or however, what were you thinking when you came up with like 10 for Forest Beach versus 20, 15 for Cockle Cove, which are, you know?
So parking was a huge part of the process, and as you, like, Forest, Cockle, Cape Gold, all of those, as everyone knows, parking is so limited. And then, so aside from parking, and it's really just trying to balance, you know, our recreational facilities with these special event requests, and then also keeping them open to the public for recreational use. So we, it's a hard, it's a hard line, it's a hard balance, and so for, for, this is what we came up with, but is obviously open to, you know, suggestions.
What if you did shuttle services only to the beaches for private events, you know, as an, you know, to, to waylay that sort of parking onus that might come up? And that an activity be limited to a specific area of the beach? I'm just thinking that, you know, my, I remember my niece had her wedding at Harding's Beach, we had more than 50 people, we were there half an hour.
Right.
And then we were out. One of my friends got married on the beach, the same thing. I just think it's such a beautiful thing that we get to have an experience, where people get to experience. I wouldn't want, I don't know how many you get requests for that a year? That might be a question that would help me, inform me.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, and I mean, Harding's obviously is much bigger, so, you know, it can accommodate more, you know, Cockle, Cockle Cove, Forest, all them, you know, 25 people can quickly overwhelm that whole beach, too. So again, we're maybe not necessarily with Harding's, especially if we could put them in a specific location, as you are suggesting, but some of, but that was, you know, the reasoning is just, you know, and even Ridge, Ridge Vale, you know, it's a little bit larger, so it can accommodate a larger number of people. But especially those smaller beaches, what we didn't want to happen is pretty much an event to be able to just take the whole, the whole area up. You know, we've gotten, you know, comments or complaints about, you know, a family being out trying to, you know, enjoy the beach, and then a whole event comes out, and it just kind of overtakes it. So it's, you know, it is a hard balance, for sure.
I guess my only, I guess my only question, Amy, is how many requests have you had that are in the ballpark of this number of participants? Has there, have there been requests for Harding's Beach where private functions in excess of 50 people?
Every now and then. It's rare that they do go above that. Most of those events for that are over 50 are the public events and the fundraisers. So it's another reason why we kind of, you know, we haven't gotten these large requests, not to say that they haven't happened sporadically over the years, but.
Just as a general comment, I'm just kind of echoing what Shereen has said, the numbers look low. They just look low. I mean, I wouldn't want to not have someone, someone wants a wedding in Harding's Beach and has 60 people to say no to them. Oh, you've got too many people. I don't know. I want to, we want to, we want to expand access and the, and the use of the, use of the beach, and the enjoyment of the beach, and for personal moments, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Corey.
Just a quick question. So based on your observation of, you know, the moderate requests that fall into these scenarios, it doesn't seem to be particularly an issue. There may be some, there may be some parties that are looking for a higher volume. So is there anything in the language, or should be, there be something put into the document that frankly would just allow a waiver of some limit, you know, some, you know, waiver, basing on the exact, you know, parameters of the events, the time, day, the dates, you know, whatever, that would allow for flexibility on a case-by-case basis?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, and, and just like, if someone was requesting a fee waiver, so we can add it maybe below the table, you know, waivers, you know, upon.
And if someone comes forth with a 75-person wedding at Harding's Beach, and it fits our, right, we can, we can, yeah, we can do it, so.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I echo that, I think that's a good suggestion. And just, well, quick question on the fees. Have these fees changed since a lot, since?
Yep, so, let me go to the.
Walk us through that a little bit.
So I'll start with the.
I'm sorry, Amy, before you leave that, I want to make sure I understand, was the suggestion that the waiver comes from us or from, from them?
Both, I would assume.
I would, I would probably run it through the whole, do the whole system like we knew.
So anything over 50 comes back to us, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Or if they're requesting a waiver, automatically, you know, after it goes to the Rec Commission would come to the select board?
Recommendation for the Park and Rec coming to the select board, like every, everything else, the process for everything else, recommendation for Park and Rec comes to us for, you know, waiver.
Okay, okay. And I, this may make this question on this topic, which is why I'm interjecting it. I was gonna ask you, if parking were irrelevant, if you had no parking considerations whatsoever, would you, would you do, is 50 the right number for, the numbers you have here, are those numbers?
For, for some of them, they are. Well, we feel they are, you know.
Oh, I, I, I understand.
You know, again, like those smaller beaches, like Forest and Pleasant, and even Cockle, you know, they're not very large.
The size of the beach, okay.
So you wouldn't want to put 75 people on those beaches, you know?
Okay, okay. And if we have a waiver process here, I think that's fine.
That's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, next, you're moving on.
Sophie, so, so I'm gonna start with the first table.
Yep.
So the arts and crafts fee, the only thing that's changed from that is that we created, the main difference is we created these different kind of groups, as you can see, resident, nonprofit, nonprofit, and then non-resident business. Every art and craft fair that we've had, specifically on the front lawn of the, the community center is where they've typically taken place, have been that $500, so typically $1,000 a day. So that has been there. That did not change. What we did do is just add, you know, we, since we added those two other columns, we created fees kind of off of that. And outside of that, every event has always just been $100. And so again, when we're doing these fees, we're trying to just weigh the impact that these events are gonna have on that facility, and kind of how we came up with the fees. We did add the electric utility fee of $25, it's pretty commonplace, although the Park and Rec Commission voted to remove it from the nonprofit column, as you can see. And then, which we kind of started to do in the last couple of years with businesses and classes and programs that are run on town property. I mean, you've seen it with Wicked Wavy that's come up, and we've, you know, done it with some of our rec programs, but basically to move any business that is running, or program that's running on town property, they will have to enter a license agreement with the town, and 20% of the revenue would go towards the town. So that was kind of already starting, but we just wanted to put it officially onto the table. The community center fee structure, again, we just added, we kind of just changed the table around. If you see the resident, so the resident, we added Chatham nonprofit to that. Those fees all stayed the same, that's what they're currently at. Nonprofit, we did add that column, so that would be a nonprofit outside of Chatham, so they're still getting a little bit of a break, but not the Chatham nonprofit rate. And then non-resident and business, we added that column. And then the last fee structure is the athletic facilities. Again, we added, currently it was just $40 across the board. We have never charged local youth leagues. Resident, so we read, resident use and nonprofit leagues have already, have always been charged $40, but we then, we added for-profit league and non-resident column to $60. And then Veterans Field Lights, that is, remain the same, they get charged $40 per hour of use.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
The only question I have, Amy, is the timeframes, how do they line up with what we're charging? So a non-resident business, ala the folks that come in in front of the community center, they're, they're there longer than four hours, so are we charging them 600 bucks, or $1,000 bucks?
Yes, yep, and that's what they've been charged for the.
Okay.
Past $1,000. So we just, they've been charged $1,000 a day, so when we were breaking this down, we wanted to make it just kind of simp, simplistic, simplest, wow, simple across the board, and so we broke it into, you know, the $500, so that the fee remains the same, but we've just kind of broken it down to kind of be consistent with the four-hour block. So it didn't change the price per day, it just kind of shows different because it's in a four-hour block.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Just, I'm a little slow. That, these numbers then are hourly rates?
They're in, so depends on which one you're looking at. So in the first table, they're all in four-hour blocks at the community center.
So before you leave that, so it's $500 for four hours?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Typically, most events are not lasting longer than four hours.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I, I just wanted to understand, I was trying to gloss what Jeff had been asking. Go ahead.
The community center, this is the structure, the way it's been, so we didn't change that.
Okay.
The community center one. And then the athletic facilities, that's the way it's been as well, we didn't change that one.
Okay, thank you. What do you want to do?
Mr. Chairman, this is a first read, so I, I think the board has given some suggestions, and I assume you would take them up with the Park, Parks and Rec Commission and then come back to us, you said?
Yeah, yeah, and I, I think that also may give us a chance, if we get any public feedback on the subject, that would help, too.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Okay, next, we have the test fits for the former Ellis property at 127 Old Harbor Road. I think Gloria McPherson will present that, the Housing and Sustainability Director, and public comment will be allowed alongside of the board on this presentation. So Gloria, welcome.
So just to clarify, I will not be presenting. I'm here if there are any questions that are Chatham-specific, but we have our consultant team from UTIL here to present the three refined concepts that the select board had requested at a prior meeting.
Okay, good. Do you want to reintroduce them, though, Gloria?
Sure, from UTIL is Tim Love and Courtney McCracken, who will probably be doing most of the presenting.
Thank you.
No offense, Tim.
No, that's fine. Just, just to set the stage here, we had a meeting with this group with some early alternatives, and actually quite a few of them, to talk about some of the design and planning issues raised by different configurations of building types, driveway access, orientation and spacing of the buildings, really with an eye on, zeroing in on options that would best fit into the existing kind of neighborhood context and, and scale. So there were aesthetic and design considerations on the one hand, and on the other was a good discussion to land on how many residential units was, would be the most appropriate, given the effort and the initiative to do this, and the larger goal to help address some of the kind of regional housing crisis and provide more attainable housing in the town. So I, I think the design issues and the density or the number of units were the, the kind of focus of the conversation last time. So based on your specific feedback on how to weigh those issues, Courtney's gonna review the three test fits we landed on.
Awesome, thanks, Tim. Hi, everybody, nice to see you all again. Just as a quick refresher, I'm Courtney McCracken, I'm an architectural and urban designer here at UTIL, and I've been working as the project manager and lead designer on this project. We also have Jesse Yang here, who's been serving as an advisor on this project as well. I'm just gonna share my screen for you guys. Okay, I can see in the bottom corner, it looks like it's sharing, but let me know if you guys can't see anything. Just to touch base on what Tim was saying earlier, we met with you guys at the end of February, and we presented at the time 12 initial test fits, to which we then refined it to three different scenarios, based on the feedback that we received from you guys. And from the feedback that we received, we kind of went back to the site via Google Earth and kind of looked at the existing context, just to better understand the scale of the, of the existing buildings and their relationships to the street. And from that, we refined our test fits a little bit more and brought the overall height of the buildings down. They were a little bit higher before, they were more so two stories with an unoccupable roof on top, and now they're more so one and a half-story buildings, so they're a little bit shorter, which helps kind of, again, unify the street. So just to go over quickly, the couple of things that we're gonna show you guys, I'll refresh you guys on what the existing conditions look like, just so you understand that. And then we have three scenarios, and what it's, what's important to remember is there's a difference between unit numbers and building numbers, which I think was kind of a big part of the conversation last time. So the first scenario is five units, which is spread out between three buildings, which we're calling the single duplex duplex. Scenario two is four units within three buildings, which is single, single duplex. And the third scenario is four units in two buildings, which is two separate duplexes. We also have kind of a typical floor plan for the units. kind of a typical floor plan for the units that we can go over quickly. And then, each of the different scenarios has site axons and site plans, and additionally has street views that we've set up for you guys. So with that, I'll get into the existing conditions. Let me know if the size of the screen is, is working and if, if things are legible. The text is not so much important, but if you're wanting me to zoom in a little bit into the images, I can also do that. So again, this is the existing conditions of Old Harbor Road. We have an existing, like, two-and-a-half-story home and an existing barn with central parking. And in this existing home, we are presuming that there is two bedrooms in, in the home, and that the, the barn is not currently occupied with any, any bedrooms. Just to go over it quickly, here is the size of the lot, which we assumed is slightly over forty thousand square feet, with the existing building setbacks for the site. And like I was saying before, we actually do have street views that we set up. So this is the street view for the existing conditions. If there's any questions as I go, feel free to pause so that you kind of keep questions fresh in your mind. So with that, I'll get into the first scenario. One of the things that was discussed last time was the option of keeping the existing home in hopes that it would be able to be reused as a two-bedroom home, and it could be refurbished. So this option shows that where the site is split into two sites that are slightly over twenty thousand square feet each. This, of course, does require a special permit to have more than one duplex, or more than one unit on each site, but this was specified last time that this is not of, of a concern for the project. So all of these would require a special permit, just for everyone's reference. So again, this is five units, four new units and the existing home. And there is one, one-bed duplex and one two-bed duplex on the site. So I can zoom in quickly to show that these two-bed duplexes are on the north side of the site, when it's been split into two. So this has kind of grouped parking with two separate curb cuts, where the existing home has tandem parking, and the new duplexes have this grouped parking here, where each of the units gets two parking spaces each. And again, this is the one-bed duplex, and this is the two-bed duplex. And I'll go down to the street view. I can also zoom into these floor plans if anybody's wanting to see in a bit more detail, but those are just showing that we were able to get everything to fit appropriately. So this is what it would look like on the site at eye level. So again, in the back, we have the existing home, that we then have the one-bed duplex in the middle, and the two-bed duplex closest to the camera. And just for, to get everybody kind of oriented, this right here is the school that's in the back of the site, just so you understand the proximity of everything. And this is one of the existing neighboring homes that's in the foreground of the view. The next option is scenario two, which is a single, single duplex. So this option has two single-family homes and additionally a duplex at the north of the site. And this is also having the parking be split into two separate parking lots. So this example shows a new two-bed unit at the very south of the site, a new three-bed unit, which is situated very close to where the existing home currently is. So this one can always be flipped out for the existing home if that home is salvageable, and a new two-bed duplex to the north of the site. And again, this is splitting up the parking, so it's assumed that the parking for the duplex would be here, and then the parking for the two homes would be here, which would be interconnected with pathways between. And then, again, we have our floor plans for the units, just to kind of show you how those are working. And then, the street view. So again, in the back, we have the new two-bed home, the new three-bed home, and the new two-bed duplex. The third scenario is duplex duplex. So this is the least dense of the options, having only four units and two buildings on the site. So this, this option here has only one curb cut, so all of the parking is kept together, where it has a new two-bed duplex and a new three-bed duplex. So for a lot of these options, we were trying to make sure that there's a variety of different density or bedroom options for all of these duplexes and homes. But we were able to fit three-bed duplexes at the very north of the site with this option. Again, we have the floor plans for each of the duplexes, and the street view, which we have the new two-bed duplex and the new three-bed duplex. And that's what we have.
Just one comment, if you go back to one of the aerial views, maybe it's the last option, Courtney.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think if the town were to issue a request for proposals for the site, it's very important that, that RFP include design guidelines, design standards as requirements, because you'll see that for all of the development scenarios, Courtney's showing you, the building masses have been broken down into two masses when it's a duplex, so that it reads like two houses that join together with very specific decisions about how much those building masses are offset or turned to ninety degrees. There's also a decision about where the roof line, where the roof line starts, which is actually pretty close to the second, to the second floor, which requires shed dormers to make that upper floor work. And that, that maximum allowable size for a shed dormer and some of the roof pitch requirement should be in the, the requirements for the RFP too, because you want to control the way the building volumes, the building masses are handled by whoever responds to the RFP, and don't, not, not just let the market decide itself or a developer. So some of the work that we've done i- in a way is helping us understand what those requirements might be. So now, really, that's it.
Dean?
Can I just ask two very quick questions? I might have something later on. On the scenario two, if you could put that up.
Yeah, for sure. I'll zoom in.
So that, where that, where the cursor is right now, that's a pretty wide space. What is that supposed to be?
So, so this is, this would be open space currently. The rhythm of the street kind of has, like, large breakup spots between the homes. And obviously, like, when you're looking at, I, I want to say, I was talking about this last time as well. When you're looking, when you're actually, like, on the street, you're not seeing where the division of the lots are. So if you're at, at the street level, you're not necessarily going to know that this is one large lot. This might appear to be three separate lots to the naked eye. But it was just an opportunity to kind of break up the site a little bit. There's, there's always an opportunity to, you know, move this option closer and have the parking be combined for the two, so there's only one curb cut. You know, you could also move this house a little bit further to the setback line. But, you know, having, having this breakup of the site here is not uncommon for, you know, what's going on with the existing context.
Yeah, it was mostly a contextual response, looking at the rhythm of structures on both sides of the road.
I will say, I forgot to say this this time, but I remember I said it last time, when we came, when it came to fitting the buildings on the site, we were doing our best to make sure that we were designing around the existing trees. So actually, a lot of where things were placed came with maximizing, not having to take any trees down as well.
And did you say you, you lowered the, the height of these structures from what was proposed last time? Is that what you said?
Yes. So I can, I can go back to show you quickly what they looked like last time, but essentially, the, actually, I'll go maybe to down here, might be easier to, to read. So essentially, last time, and Tim was kind of saying this about having the roof pitch, but last time, it was full two stories with a pitched roof that kind of just, like, sits on top, which is considered a full two-story building, whereas these are considered more so one-and-a-half stories because of the shed dormers that are required to get the proper headroom. So they're a little bit shorter than what they were.
And, and they're not literally a floor and a half. They're
Yeah.
They're like a floor and four fifths, because you lose some floor area on the second floor, but they're still functional for bedroom floors.
Okay.
They're just technically called half stories.
My final question has to do with scenario one. If you could put that.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm assuming, given what, given your explanation on the prior one as to the open space, that if you look to, I guess, the south of the existing house, that's also intended to kind of keep an open space feel? Is that?
That's right, yes.
For sure. And also, with, with this scenario here, we were, we were asked to do the two duplexes, and due, like, where the existing home is right now, you can't fit a duplex on this, you know, side of the site. And, you know, if the existing home is not here, you could probably fit, you know, a duplex here, but this, this scenario was specifically asked to keep the existing home.
So this
Yeah, this might be, this might be a scenario where with two lots, it's, it's a single-family house on the parcel on the left, and, and, and then that could either be the existing home or a new, a single-family home. And then, there's two duplexes on the, the parcel to the right. That's how, that's how, that's how the option would be framed in RFP if this was the favorite option.
This, this is the only one of the three that has five units. I was going to ask, is, is the reason why you have four plus the house so as to be able to make it economically feasible for a developer to come in and preserve that house by having an additional unit on the, on the two, two other structures? But was that part of your reasoning? Although you did say, in lieu of
Yeah.
preserving this house, you could, you could put a new house there.
Yeah, I think, I think certainly an additional unit changes the, the calculus a little bit for that single-house parcel.
Makes it
And that might be, yeah, that might even be a condition for having five units to save that house, if that's something that the
Okay.
that this group prefers or the public.
But it might, it might be, it might be an incentive to preserving that house. Okay. Thank you very much.
If I can add, it's also very efficient with 40B. So that was part of the other consideration. So you have a, an existing house on its own lot, and then, the other half of the parcel would have to be developed under 40B, which requires twenty-five percent affordable, so one out of four. So if you built three units on that side, one out of three would have had to been affordable. And if you built two, one out of two. So it just makes sense from the numbers.
So that actually almost completely answers the question I was going to ask, which is, the reason to split the, the lot is, is to accommodate a 40B on one side and a, and a single home, namely, the, the existing home on the other? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, are we assuming that existing home is going to be remodeled, or could we also substitute, if it was financially feasible by a developer, with a new home?
You, you could definitely, it could, it could be renovated if that turned out to be economically feasible, or it could just be a new, um, single-family home constructed there after a demolition. But you'd have to go through the historic, historical commission, I think, for that.
Yeah, Corey.
Quick question, just for scenario one. If we did an RFP for this, I'll preserve my comments a little bit later down. Just want to play this one out. You got two separate parcels. Would the RFP require that the respondent, developer, whatever, work on both parcels? Or would they be, in those scenarios, be like, I'm interested in parcel A, but parcel B doesn't, you know, interest me, I'm not interested? How, what, what do you perceive the mechanics? Is it all or nothing, or is it A and B?
Um, I don't think any decisions have been made. There are pros and cons to each of those approaches.
Okay. But one decision is going to be the status of the existing structure, what, what our final position is on that, and, you know.
Yeah, I think, I, I think if you, if you disaggregate them, then a project proponent might only submit for the single-family house. But that single-family house, in a way, might drive some of the, might cross-subsidize some of the duplex projects. So there's some considerations there about the economic drivers of the entire project.
Yeah. And I think, I think that it's possible that both halves of this project could attract very different developers. So it's possible and potentially reasonable to ask for them to be developed separately, although I don't, I don't know if I would, I don't know if I would make that decision for a developer.
Well, but, I mean, I, if, if our objective here is, you know, some sort of, I won't even call it affordable, just some sort of housing that somebody who's not really rich can afford, I, I'm not sure I understand how a developer looks at the, the, the single family alone, the, the, the single home alone, as something they can do that would, that would advance that objective.
Um, I don't have a specific answer for that, but it's in the back of my mind that if the town accepts the seasonal communities designation, then a year-round restriction might be possible, and that would be potentially more attractive to a developer for the, for the single-family home.
Well, but I, I don't, how did, I mean, it's going to cost them something to build the house, and that, that isn't going to be changed by the seasonal communities designation.
Well, I think that the gap between the sale of a house with a year-round deed restriction versus a house with an affordability restriction is, is pretty big. So it's, it may, it may balance out, that you could develop a house and sell it as a homeownership model, as long as it's not restricted for affordability, but year-round.
Okay. So I, I want to come back to the comments you made, Tim, that about the need for the RFP to include some pretty detailed design requirements. I think you probably put it in a slightly more informed way. But I, the, the question is, are there any detriments from the town's point of view or a project point of view as you get more and more detailed in your specifications around design and, and the like?
No, I think, I think, you said it more efficiently than I did, by the way. I, I think the design requirements as a condition of the RFP could be a fairly simple recipe, which is maximum building volume before you need to break it into two volumes, a roof pitch range, and, you know, the, the, the building height and the way the roof, the roof sits relative to the second floor, and then some, some fairly flexible dormer requirements. And I think, but with that recipe, and then the other review that's going to happen, which will get into the, some of the more kind of architectural vocabulary, aesthetic issues, I, I think the results would be successful. And, you know, the, the, the value of our key process is that you can put conditions specific to this project in there that would be harder to generalize across the whole town, let's say, in terms of, of, of design standards, maybe getting baked into the zoning in the future. So I, I think the development community that's likely to respond to this would, wouldn't be surprised by some of those dimensional requirements. I, I think the other thing that's come up that might be worth considering is including in the framing of the RFP, a, a couple of options, and, and just for argument's sake, maybe all three options that we have in front of you. And let the development respondents choose one of those adventures, based on their own perspective about what makes sense from a permitting and an economic standpoint. But the town could still decide, based on those choices that development teams make, based on the ability to execute, maybe the quality of projects the developer's done before, and the choice they make, you know, the town would then still have a choice about, about which option to pick. And so if, if you're undecided about which of the options is best, it might be small. And so if, if you're undecided about which of the options is best, it might be smart to let the, the market vote, if you will, if you're comfortable with that.
So just to follow up on that, the, the, the core of the RFP would be, we want you to make a proposal that gives us essentially a menu of choices represented by these three scenarios, and, and we'll pick one?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, each, so each developer would come up with their own scenario. I think that it's unrealistic to ask a developer to put in a proposal that includes a range of options. So you would give them the range of options and say, here are some of the things we're looking at, give us a proposal that would work for you, but it has to have some sort of, you know, nexus with what we've, we've done in these test fits.
So, but again, the, the process would not necessarily yield the, all three alternatives from which we could choose.
It depends, if three developers responded and each had a-
That's exactly my question, is, is we would have to have three developers, each one of which chose a different-
Right.
That's right.
I mean, it would, it would say something about the economic feasibility if three developers all came up with the same rough, rough idea, then you'd have a, a pretty good idea of what makes sense for the site, from a financial and development perspective.
And, and just to repeat the question I asked a minute ago, if we basically gave them these test fits and said, we want something that looks like, and for the moment, I'll assume that we're going the menu and options route, we want something that looks like one or more of these three things, that's, that doesn't create any issues from, from, from our point of view?
Yeah, there are no legal issues with that. I think, but I, I don't think it would just be look-like, it would be, you know, it would either be the subdivision of the two parcels with, it would be, it would be more specific than that. The, the menu would be, it's either two parcels with a single-family home on one and duplexes on the other, or, or you would spell that out with some specificity, and then you would have the design standards, and the pictures, in a way, would be the consequences of the, of the intersection of the parcelization, the number of units on each parcel, and then the volumetric requirements.
Okay. Oh, yeah, Carolyn, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Carolyn McCullough, and I'm chair of the Community Housing Partnership. I just, I just have a couple of general thoughts. I like the one, the scenario here that's up on the, on the, on the board right now, and a couple of reasons. One is throughout the years of trying to get this parcel forward and listening to the public's affinity for that house, even though we, we recognize that sustaining it's going to be another issue, whether it's a single-family, whether it's that house that gets rehabbed, or a house that is replicated in some way to, to, to speak to that style that we can honor Mrs. Ellis, I think the community is expecting something like that. So I really like the idea of having the one house there, however it re-manifests itself, is I'm, I'm open to whatever the costs are, to be most reasonable. So splitting the site, that has to do with the 40B, being able to have that bigger house, that, the, the, the main house there might be able to be offered at a higher price point if we just do the deed restriction, and then doing the 40B over there, where you only have one that's at affordable, you get a nice range of bedroom sizes that we're not really offering on others out there in the community. I mean, this, this one really speaks to a lot of what the community needs and what the community expects. As much as I'd like to put more, more units on this property, it's one of the easiest developed properties that we have in terms of, you know, it's level, it's not tree, you know, there's not a forest there, it's nicely located in the town. I understand that we have to be considerate of the expectations of the voters who gave us this property, so I think that has a nice density, it doesn't overwhelm the site, it's in sequence with every, those pictures that you had were from street level, it really syncs up with the neighborhood, so it offers a density, the best density, but it doesn't overwhelm it at all, and I love the two one-bedroom units, and I think then we can honor Mrs. Ellis's actual house in some form or another, and be able to sell that at a higher AMI. It won't be governed by the affordability, we're not doing a 40B on it or anything. I think if you issued an RFP with all those other scenarios, I don't know how supportive the general public would be to see Mrs. Ellis's house completely no longer there, without some form of it still there. And I would like to see maybe some flexibility given in the RFP, you know, if they want, how they want to position, but how they want to position those units on that lot or something, but I wouldn't want to break up the distribution from lot to lot. I like the one and the four, I think you really need to lean into that, that's, would be my suggestion anyways. Thank you, and thank you for the wonderful work you've done at the UTL, I really appreciate the effort that you've made there, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Dean? Just using the scenario one as, as a reference in light of the comments that Carolyn made, what would the public, what would the financial contribution be from the taxpayers if someone came, if a developer came in and did number one, proposed number one? What would we, what would we be looking for?
So, that's something that we would probably hash out in the RFP if we had a particular range of affordability in mind. So when you do a 40B to get more units, one has to be affordable at 80% AMI or below. So we know that one of those units is 80% AMI. We could say, you know, put a year-round deed restriction on the other three. We could say, we want, we want the other three to range in AMI from, you know, 100% to 200%, so an 80, a 100, a 150, and a 200%, in which case, the town would definitely have to contribute something to subsidize the cost of those quote-unquote attainable units that wouldn't be sold on the, on the open market.
What about the house, the farmhouse?
It really depends on, on how we proceed with the RFP. So we could say something like, we would like this to be developed at 200% AMI. So we would have to figure out, like, what you could get for market rate, what 200% AMI is, and the town would have to fill that gap for a developer, right? That's what we would say. I, I don't have numbers right now off the top of my head. That's why I was saying that perhaps the year-round deed restriction would be a better option, because that's certainly going to sell on the open market for more than even 200% AMI, so that gap, if there even is a gap, would be smaller for the town to fill.
If you, if you go the, the year-round deed restriction approach, can you use Affordable Housing Trust monies, or do you, are you, do you have to use regular tax money?
We would have to use, probably, yeah, we'd have to go to town meeting and get general funds or something like that.
I mean, I think scenario one has some appeal. I don't know if anybody, I'm going to say it in their right mind, would rehab that particular house, because it, it's just, to me, financially crazy to do that, but if someone wants to come in and do it, we should certainly, as we just mentioned last time, keep that as an option, and we know the historical commission is going to be looking at that house very carefully, so they may want that. I would think, just knowing that commission, if that plan were presented to them, they probably would think it's fine. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
Okay, bear with me a second, because I want to put something out there, but I want to follow up on a comment you just made, because I want to make sure I'm on the right page now, because we've had a very long road over this conversation. Obviously, we've talked about it, and we've had multiple difference of opinions on elements of it and what have you, you know, and, you know, we've gotten to the point where, like, you know, let's, let's pooper it off the pot, let's get this going, low-hanging fruit, whatever. Well, we're learning clearly, this is not low-hanging fruit, there's a big process, it takes some time, welcome to municipal projects, it is frustrating beyond frustrating to get anything done in a town. So, you know, you know, my, my, my issue has always, has been, nothing about the housing, it's always been about the, the process, to be honest with you, because we got, you know, we opened, we got the door open to, to develop this parcel in some manner, which we will agree or not agree on, and we're trying to figure how that goes. So I've always been a little bit reluctant that we, we went to put a town meeting, we got the door open on this, and now we're going beyond what the expectation of the voters are. You just made a comment about funding, so there is a potential on how we approach this, that it would go to town meeting, and they would have another, I hate to bite at the apple, but, but, but it'd be weighing in on this particular project, which I guess would give me a little bit of comfort, because I, I can't, I don't know who, how many people in town would fully support, like, scenario A, up or down? We don't know that, you know, I'm not, you know, we each get our own comments, I mean, Lord knows, we've been getting letters over the last couple of months from, you know, concerned citizens that have various ideas of different concepts for this parcel, and they're all wonderful, but they're, they're not on the table right now, or they're, they're not on the table, period, I guess I should say. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, I, I just want to kind of get more into the meat and potatoes of this, I, I really want to figure out what we're going to do with the building. You know, I think there are groups out there that would be very adamant, saying, we're going to fix this. Now, there's a cost associated with it, we know that for sure, but where the will there's a way, so we got to kind of gauge, is rehabbing that building truly in the cards, or is it completely a non-starter? You know, and there's also the barn, I, you know, very minor element to this whole package, but we do use that. So where are we going to rehouse all the stuff that's currently being used there? That's going to be a cost to the taxpayers. We're going to have to figure out a facility to put all the beach buggies, ATVs, and what the, the gator, or whatever else equipment is in that barn. You know, it's, it's a minor element in this bigger scheme, but that's another cost. We, do we have any concept of plans for that? Probably not.
So probably not, but we, but we have to do it, because remember, town meeting converted the use of this property to housing, so it's not, ultimately, it's not going to be used for storage. That was a town meeting vote.
So do we take that second parcel and put a barn on it, and keep, you know, put four units, four, one parcel with the four units, and one parcel we keep for the town, and we could incorporate some kind of structure, structures that incorporate all our needs? I mean, we, we can't be too very short-sighted, we got to kind of think a little bit broader, because these things are going to go somewhere. Do we consider it on this parcel, or maybe it doesn't make sense, but we'd-
So it was converted from municipal use to housing use, so it seems like it would be contrary to town meeting vote to have any kind of municipal use or storage on it.
Fine line with, you know, what is the expectation of the voters, but we were saying, my interpretation was two or, two or three units, and got a little bit higher on that threshold, so, well, we'll see where this thing lands, but I just got to get these thoughts out there. I appreciate it, thank you.
We're really early in the, the process. I know it's been going on a long time, but we're really early. So this initial test fit was so that people could see different possibilities for what the site might look like, but we haven't really dug into what we're going to do as far as year-round, attainable, affordable. We know that if you do more than two units on two individual lots, that you have to do a 40B, in which case 25% have to be affordable. But if we want attainable units, then the funding source for that would be the short-term rental tax revenue and the special revenue account. You also have to go to town meeting for that, so we could potentially come up with a project that has a number of attainable units, we'd figure out how much money we'd, we'd need from town meeting based on a developer's estimate, and then we would go to town meeting and ask for, you know, funds to be expended from the special revenue account for short-term rental tax, taxes for attainable housing. If we were doing something other than attainable, and I threw out the idea of year-round restrictions, you know, then we would have to find another revenue source, which would be, you know, general fund or something like that, and again, you'd have to go back to town meeting for that. We'll never get a wholly affordable product, project, because, well, I mean, I guess you could if, if Habitat or a mission-based organization did it, but it falls below the threshold for tax credits, so we're not going to get any tax credit developments for this.
Shereen?
Thank you. So I really like the idea of the roof lines of, of the designs being lowered and having the dormers, I think it really keeps into a very traditional Cape-style, you know, house that you used to see maybe back in the 70s and 80s that you don't see anymore, you know, even in comparison to the, the house next door that's been rehabbed and, and enlarged and over the course of its years. What I do like is the scenario one and two about that is that we're mostly, I think, I'm in agreement with Dean, is the scenario one speaks volumes, because it does maintain the existing home, whether it is a rehab or a renovation in the, in the liking, but the standalone idea is, is really, I think, would, would be really, sorry, it's getting late for me, but it would just, it, it would really speak volumes, I think, to the community, and as Dean had said, to the historic commission as well. And the idea that it could separate the two properties, the year-round concept of deed restriction is, is also, you know, could offset the cost. So I think in, in, in saying all that, you know, maybe scenario two might be in consideration as a, like, look see for a developer to do one or two, or give us ideas based on those, but really appreciate the idea of the RFP having those required design guidelines are really, I think, really important to in keeping to what we are looking for. I know we're not there yet, but I do like the high, I mean, I like the scenarios where we've seen the street view, and, and I just feel like it fits really well into the neighborhood, and, and it's in keeping with the styles that, 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 that area has presented in the past. Thank you.
Jeff?
Yeah, and I agree. I, I like the notion that it's coherent and it's, it has historical coherence to at least have a single-family home in that lot, whether it's the Ellis property rehabbed, or whether it's a, a, a building that's evocative of the Ellis property, that is reflective of it and gives, gives kind of honor to it. Appreciate the comments by the architects on kind of lowering the, the roofs and also using shed, shed dormers, I think that is very fitting as you, as you go along that, that Old Harbor Road. I, and particularly, I wasn't here for the discussion that kind of teed these three options up, but I am not partial to scenario two, the single, single duplex, because I feel as though the, the building, the, the two-bedroom, the two-bed unit to the south is really, has really no parking, it's going to be very difficult for folks to walk back to that parking lot, if you will, and that, that bothers me, I, I wouldn't want to live there. So I'm not partial to this, to scenario two. I am partial to scenario one, because I think it's reminiscent and evocative of what's there now, and is a good fit with the neighborhood. Really appreciated the comment by the architects on fit, kind of keep trees there, and so not interfering with some, some pretty nice trees, I think that also makes it less invasive to the neighborhood, if you will. So I, I do land as well, I'm not an architect, but I think the single, the scenario number one, I'd land there too, because of its kind of, it's evocative, reminiscent of history, no matter what we do with that building, I think having a single-family home in that lot is probably pretty important. So that's where I land, I have, I'm interested, very interested into what the scenarios might play out with respect to how we finance, or how the town's role in such a financing. Really interested in the year-round deed restriction, I think that makes a lot of sense going forward, and then having, we have to have one unit, at least, one unit at least for 40B. Anyway, I, I frankly think this is pretty exciting. We've made the statements in many venues where we're doing affordable, and affordable and attainable at Buckley, and doing affordable on Meeting House, but we really do want to do attainable here, and attainable hopefully on Steppingstone as well, and I really think we need to cohere, we need to adhere to that intent. So that's where I land, I'm, I'm actually really jazzed about this, and I'm really excited. Thanks.
So I, I'm, I'm going to say the following, I, I, I don't disagree with anything I've heard from anybody here, that's not a strong endorsement, but I, I think that we've kind of zeroed in on something that has the capacity to at least stay, achieve the next step with some consensus. My reservations are not with what's been said, they don't have anything to do with design, or the layout, the, the site layout. I do think, when push comes to shove, the driveway on the single- I do think, when push comes to shove, the driveway on the single-family side is not particularly workable, but that's not a very big deal. The thing that is of concern to me is, and Jeff sort of adverted to it, but, you know, can we make this work to accomplish two purposes? Purpose number one is that Chatham, as such, whether it, however it's done, doesn't spend a ton of money to create effectively, you know, one unit that is really affordable, and the rest of them that are, you know, a stretch for all but people that are, you know, at the very, very high end of needing homes. And, you know, I can't predict how this is gonna come out. I will say, I'll be honest, I just, you know, I'm not prepared. Somebody can come in here and tell me, they're gonna redo the house, they're gonna rehab the house, they're gonna save it, they love it, so on and so forth. That's the kinda sentiment that people who have untold amounts of money and own the house and wanna keep it generally do. People who are in the business of developing residential housing and selling it into some market somewhere, I don't really see them as being that sort of an enthusiast for saving a house that's gonna be, potentially costs more to rebuild than it would be to tear it down and build a new one. But I'm not gonna, at this point, I'm not gonna fight that battle. We'll find out when we put out an RFP. I do apropos what Cory had to say, I just wanna note, if nothing else, so that the proponent, and perhaps there are others proponents, will know that we at least knew that they'd made the proposals. We recently got a letter from a woman who is a doctor of education named Connie A. Bear, I think that's the right way to pronounce it, could be Hebert, but I'll pronounce it A. Bear, who would like to turn this whole site into some kind of a opportunity for learning and library activities for the kids affiliated with the elementary school, or otherwise, I'm not quite clear. Apropos Cory's concerns about other potential uses that we have to consider, I'd like to at least put that on the table. If nobody wants to talk about it anymore, that's fine, I'm not a particular proponent of it. And then the other thing is that we've had, there's been floating around another proposal, much, much higher density, which claimed, which was brought to my attention, I guess, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, that much higher density, but said that the, both the barn and the Ellis home would be, would be saved and made functional for purposes of the development. Again, I doubt anybody has any interest in that, but I just wanna put it on the table publicly. So those are my thoughts. Cory?
I'll bite. As far as the higher-density scenario, I mean, no big surprise. I think, I mean, I'm a little uncomfortable with going over the two, three-unit scenario that I thought of when we pitched the town meeting. This is a gray area for me. I think much higher, higher density is not something I would wanna entertain or advocate for. So for me, that topic's a non-starter. I respect all, and as far as the individuals spending a letter about different ideas, we've got a lot of, we've had a handful of correspondents provided to us with ideas for the parcel, that I think have good merit, but they're not part of the conversation right now. Town meeting has taken a certain position, we declared it surplus inventory, we're on a path for housing, I'm not, I wouldn't say if the scenarios were different, and there were different proposals, I couldn't see myself supporting some of the ideas that have been presented. They're good ideas. I think personally, I would, you know, I believe that the donor had certain wishes, and anything in the process that we can do to acknowledge, or, you know, support, or, you know, their intent for this property, support their wishes, or whatever, I would like to do, but they're not on the table. That's the bottom line is, I don't care how valid they are, they're not part of the decision right now, so.
Okay, Dean.
Yeah, I just wanted to make some general comments. I did respond to Dr. A. Bear's letter, and I indicated that I had previously, as did Cory, opposed trans-dedicating this for housing, and I myself, at the time, I think, at this board, said that I thought this parcel should be somehow incorporated into uses that were consistent with the school and/or the community center. But I did point out that, you know, that battle was fought and lost, and so my view is, at this point, our job as a select board is to come up with the best design for this project, for housing purposes. I certainly don't wanna get into a design that is high-density, and I have sort of felt something in the three to four units would be as high as I could go, but at the same time, one thing that has been consistent with people that have written to me or to us, they seem to want to do something to preserve this house. And so I look at scenario one, and I think, well, you know, there's one way of doing it, if somebody wants to come in and make a proposal, and the cost of doing it is that you have four other units, at least on this particular sketch, and I certainly could be open to that. Whether that's gonna be consistent with what town meeting voted back then, well, we'll know when we have to go back to town meeting and get some money, and if they say, hey, you're putting too much here, then that's gonna be the answer. We're not gonna approve the amount of money you're looking for. If they're comfortable with it, then it's a go. So I don't know, I'm not saying I endorse scenario one, but of the three that were presented, that makes some sense to me. I did have one question, you mentioned you had a concern about the driveway on, what was that? I didn't understand what you were saying.
Just the parallel parking, one behind the other.
I see what you're saying, okay, all right.
That's, that's a...
No, I just...
There's gotta be a more practical way to solve the parking problem than that.
Yeah, I didn't know what you had in mind there. Thank you.
Yeah, just, can I interject for a second? Is that okay?
It certainly is, yes.
Yeah, I think the concept of this scenario, the one that's up on the screen, is that it would be a choice of development proponent to either keep the existing house, or build a new single-family house, but within some dimensional constraints, so it doesn't end up being a McMansion, right? So I think that optionality would need to be built into the proposal, and maybe a case made for that flexibility when this goes to the town. I think making a condition that that house needs to be preserved could present some risk to the town, because we don't know the condition of that house, the code upgrades that would be required, and the cost, the existing condition of the utility hookups and things. I think it would be lower risk for the town to make that an either-or. I know it might be less popular than with people that have a strong sentimental attachment to that house, but that's my perspective on this.
Jeff?
Yeah, just one quick question, could you not preserve some of the design features that evokes that house as it sits there now? And then we could...
Well, I think, yeah, I think our design guidelines that we're proposing for the other two structures that we're showing in that rendering would result in a house that had the same characteristics, you know, low roof, dormer. Probably for single-family houses, we might have a maximum footprint to keep the house from getting too large. So I think the recipe of design standards could achieve that.
I'm just gonna suggest, this brings to my mind the Eldridge Garage, where we, I like the word evocative, so. Were you gonna say something, Shereen?
No, no.
Oh, sorry.
Fine, yeah.
Can I just say, I was thinking of the fishing building on West Chatham, isn't that a replica of what was there before?
I think they did a big rehab on that, I don't think they tore it down, I think, I don't remember.
Especially the barn.
The barn, the barn was torn down.
Preserved, Dean.
One of those structures was torn down, and a replica was put up, isn't it?
Yeah, that was...
That was the barn?
That's the fishing, but the barn, the barn is almost similar to what was there before.
Okay.
It was rebuilt, I mean, redone.
Okay.
But I, you know, just my comment, I've already said it, but I just think, you know, if we give some historical credence, you know, to this building, and tie it back into its history somehow, I think would be, I think would be appropriate. That's all.
Yeah, I mean, the word that everybody, maybe we're a little afraid of it, but that honors that history and tradition and intention, without essentially spending a king's ransom to do it, which is just not practical. I think that goes a long way, I don't know if you'd agree, but that's my view.
I think the market will tell us.
Yeah, well, that too.
I mean, we can put some special design guidelines just for a single-family house, like you could, for instance, because that has a porch in the front, you could just require that any house that gets constructed on that lot has a porch in the front, for instance. Like, that's not gonna make or break a developer's proposal. So you can treat it a little bit differently than the others, not going overboard and making it unfeasible. But yeah, you can definitely pull out some design features of that, of the existing house.
So, what do we wanna do next? Yeah, I mean, are we at the stage of talking about authorizing an RFP?
Yeah, I think you could, I think that, yeah.
And do we, with all due respect, Gloria, do we need any help other than you to do that?
So because, so actually, I'm really good at like, the technical stuff, but I would love, I would love help on the design guidelines from UTL for this, personally. I mean, it's not my decision, I have no, and this was an unexpected question, so I don't know where the funding would come from, but I think it would be really useful for them to come up with a series of design guidelines that describe what they've done, so that we know that we're gonna get something within those parameters. And I also really would like to see some, like, special, a few special design guidelines, if the house is not able to be preserved, but has to be rebuilt.
Well, I'm gonna leap forward here, and subject to better thinking around the table, and say, maybe it makes sense, because it's not only design, it's not only guy, I mean, if you're gonna have help, you probably want help not only to get the RFP done, but then we're gonna wanna hear from them when we look at the RFP. So maybe the next step is for you to go work out an arrangement with them that would contemplate all of that, and come back to us. I don't know how people feel about that, but that would be mine.
I think that's fine, the next steps.
So we're not at the drafting stage, yet?
No, because she's gonna have to go talk to UTL and figure out what they can do for us, and how much, and, but, again, my view is, by the time she comes back with an RFP, we're gonna say, well, why did UTL think this, or why did they do that? We're gonna wanna talk to them at the same time, I think.
Okay.
So I'm scoping the engagement here a little bit.
All right. Are we focused on any one scenario at this point?
Frankly, I am, it's scenario one.
Okay, and I can go along with that, as long as, as long as preservation of the house is an option.
I think that can be clearly written into the RFP.
Yeah.
Okay, is that, are we all on board with that?
I am, I don't know...
Mr. Matters?
I can work with that conversation.
Okay. I mean, we're not doing anything.
We're not doing anything, right.
All we're doing is asking Gloria to have a conversation with them.
Exactly.
Although I was trying to save money by asking if we could just give somebody the pictures that we've already paid for and be done with it, but I, that's not a serious suggestion.
I don't think the, the design standards and the things that we would qualify, in a way, we're gonna reverse-engineer the pictures to set the design standards, so I don't think it's a huge effort. But, but I, we'll carefully scope it with Gloria, and we'll discharge you by the meeting.
Well, that's fine, as long as you don't charge us anymore, the length of the meeting is irrelevant.
Yeah. But we'll discharge you by the minute, like an attorney.
There you go. Okay, good. Okay, are we, are we good? Oh, please do. Carolyn, if you're gonna comment all the time, maybe you could sit closer to the microphone here.
I just wanna speak really quickly to the comments about the expectation that would only be two or three units, and now it's more, and that's a little bit, you know, challenging. I just wanna point out that we're talking about two one-bedrooms and two two-bedrooms, so that's six bedrooms. You might be comfortable with two, three-bedroom houses, it would have been the same scenario. So it's not, even though we have actual units, it's still not a lot of density in terms of household size, if you factor that in together. So maybe that would make it a little more palatable, but thank you.
Thanks, okay. I think we're ready to move on to the next agenda item. Thanks, Courtney and Tim, very helpful, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thanks, Gloria. We have one committee appointment to the Economic Development Advisory Committee. We have Lucia Quinn. Any thoughts, comments, or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Lucia Quinn as a member of the Economic Development Advisory Committee until June 30th, 2027, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second?
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dyken?
Aye.
And Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor, Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Dyken?
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Davis?
Ms. Davis, aye.
Sorry. Mr. Shell says, Ms. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned at 8:13. Good night, Chatham.